All right, let's call the City of Milton. Virtual Common Council meeting to order Tuesday, January 19th at 6:01 PM. And can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
The agenda was posted at Dave's Hardware, Piggly Wiggly, and Milton City Hall.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? So Ryan motioned and Bill seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries. And then pledge of allegiance, you can see that just over Inga's left shoulder, the flag. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. I see that Rip is on. Is there anybody else, Inga, in the waiting room?
No, there is no one else in the waiting room at this point. Everyone that's attending the meeting is here.
And Rip, do you want to speak when your your items come up or now?
Sorry. No, I can wait. That's fine. I'll wait.
Okay, all right. So I think that's all we have for anybody for public comments as far as we can tell. And is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No more.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Mayoral proclamation proclaiming January 2021 as Human Trafficking Prevention Month. So I'll just read the proclamation. National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. Whereas the problem of human trafficking is enormous with traffickers exploiting an estimated 24.9 million victims worldwide. And whereas traffickers are motivated by money and human trafficking has estimated profits exceeding $150 billion per year. And whereas anyone can be a trafficking victim, human trafficking includes forced labor and sex trafficking. And it affects children and adults, citizens and visitors, women and men, and girls and boys. And whereas the average age of initial human trafficking entry into the commercial sex industry in the United States is 13 years old. And whereas traffickers often tailor their tactics to the unique vulnerabilities of each victim. They can lie, isolate, control, intimidate, beat, torture, and abuse. And whereas cases of human trafficking have been reported in all 72 Wisconsin counties. And whereas the Rock County Anti-Human Trafficking Task Force was established in the spring of 2017. Their mission is to develop and maintain a community network that serves to educate, prevent, and respond to victims who have been or are at risk of being trafficked. Now therefore, the Common Council of the City of Milton supports the Declaration of 2020 as National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. Urging residents to recognize the signs of human trafficking, collaborate with local agencies to stop it, and provide advocacy for the victims impacted. And I will sign this January 19th as the mayor of the City of Milton.
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of the Rock County Anti-Human Trafficking Task Force, have always appreciated the support from the city for the efforts that we as a task force do and will continue going forth the rest of this year and continuing our work.
It's good work. It's tough work, and we appreciate that. Discussion and possible action on COVID-19 related leave time policy.
For folks who may or may not be aware, the Federal Families First Coronavirus Relief Act, also known as FF-CRA, which was established by the federal government as part of their coronavirus relief package that they passed last summer, expired on December 31st of 2020. And under the legislation that was passed in late 2020, that portion of the COVID-19 pandemic relief package was not re-upped or was not included in that portion of the legislation. So that portion of the policy from the federal level expired on December 31st. In discussions with staff and seeing other communities in the region, what their approach has been, many other communities, including Rock County, have decided on a unilateral basis within their respective municipality or jurisdiction to extend the FF-RCA or FF-CRA-type benefits within their individual organizations. So what we have done is we have done something similar with this policy that we have put forth. It is an extension of the FF-CRA provisions, similar extension up until March 31st of 2021. And obviously, if the federal government passes legislation that extends the FF-CRA, this policy would be moot. There are some differentiating factors of this policy compared to what the federal FF-CRA had provided. That federal document or policy provided 80 hours of leave time. And we have parsed that down to 40 hours. And the federal policy provided for 12 weeks of an FMLA extension for childcare if an individual needed to attend to a child whose school went virtual, for example. We did not include that in our local municipalities' extension of that. Those provisions certainly can be put back in if that's the council's desire. But with discussions with the department heads, this was the policy that we brought forth. And Inga was the main drafter of this policy, obviously. So I don't know if I missed any highlights of that or anything you wanted to add, Inga?
No, I don't think so. I think you pretty much covered it.
Okay.
And although Inga drafted the policy, she was not the creator of the policy. So the creation of the policy happened in discussion with department heads. So I didn't want you to kind of lay that on Inga's shoulders, like
Yeah.
You know, changing the benefits was her idea. That's not
And technically, this is really an extension of what the council adopted last April when the federal government created their policy. This is an extension of that with those two changes to the leave time.
So I'll just, I will just call on people as I see you on my screen and then we'll go from there. Bill, do you have any questions or comments or adjustments you'd like to make?
No questions.
No questions.
Larry?
No questions. Just a clarification. As I understand it, if an employee has already used some of this time, then this is not another 40 on top of that. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. Yep. Yeah, it's not in addition to, it's a continuation of. So even under the original Families First Coronavirus Relief Act that had the 80-hour allotment, if individuals used those 80 hours, they were out. And then they would need to use their leave time as provided by the City of Milton, whether that be PTO in terms of nonrepresented employees or sick leave in terms of represented employees. Or the medical leave bank, which is also afforded to nonrepresented employees.
Thank you.
Lynda?
My apologies for my technical difficulties. I do have a question unless you've already covered it. About how many of our employees do we know have taken time for the COVID?
Yeah, I guess it depends on how we answer that question is different. If it's a situation in which how many employees have been infected with COVID and required to take leave because of their direct result of having COVID, I don't know that number, if it's six, seven, something like that. If it's the question of have folks had time off because of an immediate family member care for an immediate family? We've had a couple of those. And early on in the pandemic, when things were really kind of up in the air, we afforded employees the opportunity to have COVID time, which meant if they were caring for a child or things like that, we didn't require them to use FMLA or medical leave bank or PTO. So there's really three or four different categories, but you know, it's impacted, I would probably say, you know, a third of the organization in one way, shape, or form. Does that seem like a fair number, Dan and Inga? Maybe between a quarter and a third?
Yeah, we have kind of different phases over the course of 2020 where we were trying to accommodate different situations for employees. So at the beginning, we were not requiring employees to use that FF-CRA time. And then later on in November, that's when we started to require employees to start using that time. So there's eight employees who have touched that FF-CRA time. And then other employees who used other types of situations when the pandemic was first starting off. Does that make sense?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there a motion?
Sorry.
No moved.
I would move.
Okay, there's a motion to approve
The COVID-19 related leave time policy.
Thank you. And a second by Ryan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding the creation of a private-led service line replacement program filing an application for financial assistance from the State of Wisconsin Environmental Improvement Fund and request for qualifications to certify contractors to perform the work.
So when we hired Mark Langer last year, we thought it was going to make things easier. But I think Mark is the first person I've ever seen write a memo that requires three motions at the end of it. So, I don't know. You don't pay by the motion, Mark.
Steps to the process and a lot of different requirements to follow, so forgive me. So this is a continuation of the last, from the last meeting where we passed a resolution to designate an authorized representative to apply for funding. What this memo discusses is creation of the lead service line replacement program. That program can be developed, it's pretty flexible on how the funding can be distributed. And it's really left up to the local utilities and the cities. What we're proposing is 100% reimbursement for the private-led service lines to eligible properties. An eligible property would be considered a residential property. Let's see, the wording is important here. It's an eligible property is considered to be residential and owned by an individual. And in this case, we're going to require the property previously having had the utility-owned lead service line replaced. The reason for that is because if we don't require an eligible property to previously have had the utility-owned service line replaced, we would be required to replace those whenever a private line is replaced to be eligible for this funding. And currently, the water utility does not have funding available for what could potentially be several lead service lines that may need utility replacements. The other parts of the program are in the attachment, there's the letters, public information. We will also have to create a certified contractor list, and that's the request for qualifications. And there are several steps that the contractors have to follow to meet that. There's requirements for wage, potentially for federal wage requirements or American iron and steel requirements. And those are all detailed in the RFQ. And then the last step, or the last item, which is actually the first motion, would be asking or applying for approval with the DNR for the safe drinking water loan monies to be used for this program. The, one item that could be discussed is potentially requiring a cost share from the local property owners who would apply. I haven't had a lot of discussion with other municipalities about this, but in some of the discussion I have had, the feedback was that even limited cost shares really reduced the applications and the desire for the replacement for the local homeowners. So that's kind of where we're at with the 100% reimbursement. There is likely to be one more scheduled year of funding for this based on the current funding that's been proposed through the Safe Drinking Water Loan Program. I guess the hope would be if we find several lead service lines that would not meet the required or the eligible property requirement because of the utility-owned service line having not previously been replaced, we would be able to create that list as part of this program and apply next year to try to eliminate those and also budget accordingly so that the utility can fund its share of that replacement. Other than that, I mean, if there's any questions, it's fairly involved. Not the most fun project, but it's an important one.
Lynda, do you have any questions or comments?
I guess I would like to see a little assistance if we could. But I'm not so sure about 100% funding. Could we maybe look at some other communities with those, with that?
So are you saying so that the customer has to provide some or contribute some cost?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we could look. The funding that we're using is all from the Safe Drinking Water Loan Program. So I could inquire with the DNR and see if they have any other local communities that are similar to Milton in size and see what they've done.
I think it's a really good program and I like, I love all of the information that you've given us, Mark. It's really good. Have we, just maybe this question is for Howie. How long, how often do we review the properties with the water hookups? Especially as I'm looking at the areas here, it seems like a lot of it's the older homes.
So I can answer that. The service material documentation is something that the DNR requested we start doing a few years back. So it's something that is new. That's why our inventory is not complete at this time. The ones that we know of are where they've been inventoried. Now, we've got several other properties that are inventoried that wouldn't be indicated on that map because they're not lead. I think to date, we've inventoried approximately 40, 40 or 43% of the city's private lead service lines. And that happens when the water meters are changed. That's when we do our inventory. So one step of this process is to try to get the homeowners to inventory it themselves. And then we would verify that prior to them applying for the program. And that would hopefully speed up our process so that it doesn't take as long as the cycle is currently scheduled to take.
And I just feel like it would be something that I would like to see the property owners put, add to for the sake of just maybe getting more property owners to do the replacements.
Yeah, it was certainly, the funding could potentially be spread out more if there is a cost share from the property owners. Right now, though, we are applying for more than we know of. I would just keep that in mind. And if the DNR were to award this, I mean, I think that it's a reasonable assumption that we will discover more than we know of if participation is high and because we only have inventoried 43% of the city. But yeah, I mean, if we were to find more than 50 and there's a higher cost share than yesterday, the funding would go farther.
Thank you. Larry?
I just want to support Lynda's point. And I think if we could keep it even at 5% or something like that to spread out those funds a little further, because lead is an important issue. You know, just, we know, we've known this for years in this country, what's happened with our lead system and the effect on people's health. So I want to do our best in our community to sustainability-wise and just environmentally-wise to eliminate as much of those as we can. I salute you on that, Mark. The only other question I have is when we get a list of qualified contractors, what's the standard approach generally on selecting a contractor? Is it kind of you give one job to one group person and another
The program is developed so that the homeowners contract directly with the contractors. What we're asking is for them, and we'll see how many qualified contractors we get. If we only have one, then we're only going to get one price. I mean, I would expect we're going to have more than one. So we're asking for at least, I think, two prices. And then we're kind of advising them to take the lowest.
Sure. Okay, so it's a fair, it's a fair process in that sense to the homeowner and to the contractors. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and that's not a requirement of the state. The state allows some flexibility there as well. But we're again trying to, you know, we have to go through the process to create the list of qualified contractors. So they should all be qualified. So then at that point, it would just become who? Or how would you recommend a homeowner to make the selection? And it seemed to me that low cost would be, you know, the best way because they're all already qualified to do the work.
Sure.
And that, if I understand you correctly, we don't get involved with that. We just give a list to the homeowner and say, here, pick whoever's on
Yeah, that's correct. They'll reach out to as many contractors as we'd like them to. Like I said, I think we have a minimum of two listed, maybe three. And then, and that will change to, or could potentially change again depending on how many qualified contractors we have. If there's only one, then we have to make some modifications. But yeah, so they'll reach out to the contractor, they'll get a cost estimate, or they'll get the cost estimates. And then they'll provide them to the city for review. And if it's verified that they have a lead service and they have reached out to the contractor and they've gotten the pricing, we'll provide them an authorization to proceed with the work. And then the city, the city does fund the project, but we're reimbursed by the DOT, or by the DNR, I'm sorry, for the work. And that can be done. It's not as if we have to go through the whole process. I think it's a $10,000 increment that the DNR will reimburse us. So it's not like a huge amount of money that has to be fronted by the city to do this program. But there is, and again, that's all reimbursed.
Thanks, Teresa.
Yes, well, first of all, thank you, Mark, for all the extensive background work you've done. It's very impressive. I do, however, I guess feel strongly that as long as you have done the background work on the funding and so forth and given the situation that many families are faced with in terms of the financial issues that have confronted them during the past year, that if we do have the opportunity to take advantage of financial assistance in dealing with a problem that this presents with the lead in the water and so forth, that we should really take advantage of having it paid for them rather than offering it to them and saying that you need to pay for part of it if you're going to take advantage of it. You know, it just, you know, if he has gone to the trouble of applying for this financial assistance through the state, that, yeah, I would like to do it that way. I understand the idea of giving them a financial commitment to stick with it. But now's not necessarily the time to do that. No.
Thanks, Teresa. Ryan?
I approach a good Teresa. And so I have really no other questions, so.
Thanks, Phil.
Yeah, I was going to express something similar to what Teresa's offering. If you don't have the money, you're not going to do it. And so the people who are most disadvantaged simply won't take advantage of it, even if it is a really small amount. You know, I understand the idea and the good thought of people having skin in the game and, you know, that kind of thing. But, you know, I just hate to have the thought that, you know, some kid is still drinking lead in their water because mom and dad simply can't afford, even if it's 5% of the cost. So I'd prefer if it were 100% reimbursement.
So what is the first motion?
Approval to implement the private lead service line replacement program as presented on the condition of grant funding be awarded and based on available utility funding or if changes, this is fair with those changes. So if we don't, if we decide not to change the funding allocation and the eligible properties, it would just be to implement the private lead service line replacement program as presented on the condition of grant funding be available. If we want to make changes, then we would just have to, I mean, all that, and I could do that. Or we could bring it forward at a future meeting. The one that I would like to have approved tonight for sure is the approval to submit the application to the DNR for financial assistance from the State of Wisconsin Environmental Improvement Fund. And then the third was approval to see qualified contractors to perform the LSL replacements.
Can I suggest we do separately, all three separately?
Yes, they do need to be done all separately. Yep. Lynda?
I'll make the first motion to approve to implement the private lead service line replacement program as presented on the condition of grant funding being awarded and based on the available utility funding or if changes are desired with those changes.
I would second that motion.
Just quick, the caveat on the end is if there are changes, those will be implemented. Do you want any changes to the program as discussed or not?
No.
Okay, so I'm going to leave that piece of the motion off then. Is that agreeable to both of you?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, there's a motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay, that motion passes. And then there is a second motion to be made. Lynda?
Make motion for the approval to submit the application for financial assistance from the State of Wisconsin Environmental Improvement Fund.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Motion number three. Go ahead, Lynda.
Might as well.
Approval to see qualified contractors to perform private LSL replacements.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that motion carries. Good job, you guys.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, yeah. Well, hopefully we ask good participation and we can really hone in on what's left, if any, of lead service lines after this year and maybe get close to getting all of them done in the next cycle.
Yeah, that would be a relief to everybody and their children.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, discussion and possible action on Resolution 202102, authorizing the submittal of a community development investment grant for 645 College Street.
So Bob Rippenberger, who's on the call tonight, has um requested that the city. Uh, apply for a CDI or Community Development Investment Grant through the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation. Uh, and a part of that process is the common council of the of the municipality needs to. Pass a resolution authorizing the submittal of that grant. It's really kind of just a um a procedural process that. Lets the council or makes the W E D C aware that the council is knowledgeable of a potential uh application. The city's role in the process is kind of that of a. Fiduciary or or middleman in which uh the W E D C then releases funds to the city to then reimburse the. Uh, developer, who in this case is is Bob Rippenberger. And uh, this would accompany a a future application. To the W E D C uh at the time that the application is completed, but this is a step in the process that is required. The resolution, if passed, doesn't bind Bob to apply for it. It doesn't bind the city to apply for it. It doesn't bind Bob to uh come up with the with the required match or the W E D C to release funds or the city to provide. Anything else. It's just really kind of a procedural step in the process, so. It's uh, it's early on. Uh, we're in the process of filling out the grant paperwork uh as it is. And we're hoping to have that submitted, you know, hopefully in in February or March or as their financial year runs from. Uh, June to July. So the resolution is kind of one step in the process. It's a box. We can check on the application. And then uh, keep moving through that uh, the financial aspects of the application.
And then is there um. A restriction to the number of uh grants businesses and the City of Milton could apply for?
No, there's not a restriction. W E D C has uh made it made it kind of clear. Even on our call with Bob and I, when we talked to the W E D C that, you know, they they prefer communities. That haven't, you you know, they look at communities that haven't received a grant. More recently, more favorably, and then those entities that have received a grant. Although they're not uh denied or or or, uh, you know, thrown out. They they receive lesser priority. The City of Milton hasn't received one um, to my knowledge, maybe ever. And um, and and certainly haven't in in since I've been here in in the six years that I've been here, so. Uh, in talking with the W E D C, you know, they they view that as a favorable uh component of this application. And especially in in this funding cycle, they they loosened the rules uh rather exponentially. Uh, in order to make more pro projects eligible. Uh, they dramatically reduced the match. And did away with the prevailing wage requirement and there's so there was. There's a lot of hurdles that other uh past funding cycles would have to jump through that this funding cycle would not have to jump through. I know that's wasn't part of your question, but it. It does uh make it probably more competitive on a statewide basis.
And then businesses just compete for this. There's so much money and they just compete against each other. It's a competitive grant process.
Yeah, I can't remember the exact dollar allocation the W E D C had for this funding cycle, if it was eight million or something, and I I I have no idea how much is left. How much has been awarded, but um Jason Scott from W E D C certainly made it clear that there are still funds available.
Okay. Um, Linda, do you have any questions or comments?
Um, yeah, I do. Uh, so. Now, um, have you actually been working with Jason also?
Are you talking talking to me?
Yeah.
Linda? Yeah, yeah, we originally had a call with Jason a couple of back in December, maybe November. And and I actually exchanged some emails with them as recently as today. So um, and then. So, yeah, ultimately, he's the grant. Recipient reviewer and aworder, so he's the one who's kind of. In charge of the program, for lack of a better term. I'm sure there's other people on the review panel, but this is definitely his wheelhouse.
So is this the same property that we did a TIF extension on last week?
No, that that was six twenty-five Greenman. This is six forty-five College Street. This is the former Captain Clean Building. Across from the old American Awards and Promotions Building on College Street. So this, uh, Bob had a site plan go before Plan Commission. Last fall for this project. I think.
See that correct, yeah.
So, Bob, I I just, I guess I just have to ask you, you've got quite a few projects going on here. Any of those to completion? Cause I feel like you're kind of, I mean, I love what you're doing, but I kind of see you jumping around here.
Okay, so uh, when we moved to Milton approximately eleven years ago, we purchased a six thirty-five Greenman Street. The old Merrick Weld shop. And um, we purchased that, we worked with the city and uh we did receive a five thousand dollar facade grant improvement for that. Uh, for the the original building that we purchased. Sometime after that, we purchased what most people would refer to as the old Sayre Building. And um, with the help of the city, um, we revamped that building completely from roof to structure. Uh, to electrical to interior and the city did award us a twenty thousand dollar facade grant. Uh, for the rebrick and the restructure of the new windows and the garage doors. We did that one secondly. Thirdly, we purchased the old doghouse um on the corner. And um, in the process of purchasing that, property next door came available to us, of which we had already bought a home on the other side of it. So we took advantage um of actually getting more bang, I guess, for our buck um and buying that home. And tearing that down and building a brand new facility. And uh, so it it kind of halted any work that we were doing. On the doghouse because we concentrated all our efforts on on that building. On six twenty-five Greenman Street. That building has been completed and finished. So every building that we have started. Work with is been built, completed and done. The only one that we haven't done anything with other than siding and new garage doors. And windows is the doghouse because we plan on tearing down majority of that and building new. On that corner, so we haven't touched that yet. And in the process, we needed more space. This building over on six forty-five. College Street came available. Um, so we thought, boy, this is a great opportunity and um. We wanted to work with the city again to see what funding there may may be available to help rebuild that building and um. Uh, we basically found out that there was nothing available and that we um went ahead and worked with uh. Other entities and found out that there's this CDI grant with a W E D C and um, so we're really excited about that. We have contractors lined up to complete all the work this year. That entire building will be um, will be done. With new windows, new garage doors, um, new roof, new exterior, all the brick repaired and a couple of the old. Tired and torn down additions will be removed. And um, so that building will look better by the end of this year. Than it ever has since it was built. And um, I think we've shown that in the three buildings that we've already completed and restored. And we are probably the only business in the history of downtown Woodridge Square to build and restore. Three three buildings. Now we're working on our fourth and we will go into our fifth. We're already working on plans and our architect to get state approval and move forward on. Uh, the corner building uh for next year. We talked about trying to get it into this year's plans, do them both simultaneously, get them both done this year. And um, Jason felt that that might be pushing the envelope a little bit. And I asked uh Alan what the city may talk about, think about that. I didn't really get any response, so I thought, you know what? I'm not gonna be pushy. We're gonna stay with the original focus and we'll get this one done this year while we work on plans. To tear down and rebuild uh the old doghouse either next fall, if we can get it in to the new funding or next. Be twenty twenty-two. So. We have done a lot of buildings and it does get very confusing um with what we've done and um, we want to continue to do more. And um, we look for continued help and support in any way that we can get it from everybody, um, because as I've tried to outline. As this looks like from the outside, it looks like TLC is doing really well, making a lot of money and building a lot of buildings. Unfortunately, these buildings are not, they're kind of like old cars. They're not a good investment and we've invested way more in these buildings. Than than their current value. And we've had to take personal assets that we've had to see some of these to completion.
So the house on Greenman Street is part. Kind of confused me on that that doghouse because I thought the doghouse on Parkview, the side of the house is what you had done on Greenman Street. Is that the same house or was it just an addition to the garage when you did that? Project, I'm. I'm confused.
So um. The doghouse, which is a one thirty-three Parkview.
Right.
Right? Uh, the only thing we've really done there is new windows, garage doors and siding. And we've only done that on the portion that we intend to keep. The front side, we're not doing anything with because we want to tear it down. It was built in eighteen sixty-four and it's, there's just the foundation and everything on it just is in very poor condition. The electricals, there's no electrical up there. It has been, we've completely shut it down. It's just a, it's just. It's just too too poor condition. So we have no plans. That building is is in better condition today. With we put all new electrical service in it and um. And 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 re redid the inside with all the the drywall work and things too and painting and cleaning. I I promise you, it's in much better condition today than than it has been in fifty years. And. And but we've only redone the area that we're gonna keep. There's no reason for us to put any money on the front side as we intend to tear it down. I I feel like. We have so many things that we've done that it gets very confusing to keep track of. So we've completed and done with uh two oh one Parkview, completed and done with six thirty-five Greenman, completed and done with six twenty-five Greenman. Completed and done as far as we're gonna go with one thirty-three Parkview this year and now working on uh hopefully to complete. Six forty-five College Street this year.
And the grant uh resolution is for six forty-five College Street.
College Street. College Street.
No, you said you said college. I just wanted to make sure folks understood that this item is for the the Captain Clean Building.
This, yeah, this topic that we're talking about here is only for six forty-five College Street.
Right.
Clean building.
Yep, correct.
Well, I think it's great that you are working with the W E D C. I'm glad that you took the opportunity to reach out and find out what kind of. Grants there are available. A lot of businesses don't do that.
Linda, anything else?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Larry?
No questions. Thank you.
Teresa?
No questions.
Ryan? Oh, I'm sorry, Teresa, did you want to?
No, no, that's right.
Okay.
No questions from either.
Bill?
Uh, no questions.
Okay, is there a motion?
I would move that we authorize the city to apply for the uh W E D C C D I grant for six forty-five College Street.
So to approve resolution two thousand twenty-one oh two?
Ah, yes, there is a resolution number there. Yes, to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh two.
I'll second that.
Tell me, yeah, one second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that motion carries.
Can I, can I ask one quick question?
Yeah.
You know, so I've done numbers on the on the building and it it, we're gonna be upside down heavily on this building restoration.
Are you talking about the one they just approved the resolution for?
Yeah, while while we're talking about that one, so I don't confuse anybody. Um, how do I, who do I talk to and how do I move forward? I I do want to pursue other. A possible funding options to help with this because we're gonna be so, we're gonna be very upside down on this building, um, even with the help of the. You know, i- if we get the. The help with the CDI grant, we're still gonna be terribly upside down with value versus what we invest. I still want to look to see if there's any possible TIF money or uh beside grant improvement loans. How do I or who do I talk to about that?
Well, so this is something that we don't have on the agenda, so. So I, you know, if you want to email me or or something like that, but it it's just, it's not on the agenda, so we can't.
Okay.
Have that discussion, but I appreciate it. Thanks.
I I did, I did email. About three times.
Okay, so it's not on the agenda, so.
Alright, okay, okay.
Okay, thanks, Rip. Alright. The uh next item is discussion and possible action regarding a commercial facade grant application request for TLC Restorations at six twenty-five Greenman Street.
So this is the six twenty-five Greenman. This is the the new building that uh Bob constructed next to his original building on Greenman Street. There used to be a house there. Bob demolished it and built this building. This is also the the project that we um just amended the TIF development agreement on two weeks ago. Um, so what uh Bob is requesting in this situation is a commercial facade grant. In the amount of ten thousand dollars for uh for this project and as I talked about with Bob. And and in the memo, the Commercial Facade Improvement Grant Guidelines indicate that new buildings are not eligible, but it ultimately is the council's. Uh, discretion if they want to. Expand that uh that this one time or if they uh want us to revisit the grant application process to make. New buildings eligible or you want to consider the fact that there used to be a building there and that was demolished. And 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 the new building took its place as um the nexus. Uh, but it's ultimately a policy decision because it's 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 different from what uh, it's outside of the policy that currently exists. So that's why it's worded in the way that it is. Typically, we just bring these forward and the council reviews them, but this one is is slightly different. And Bob has indicated that the the project is done. Um, he said that a couple of times tonight. We also don't typically award uh facade grant applications for work that's already been completed, so. There is a, there's a slight deviation on this on on this project as well. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody kind of understood. Which building this is for and how this is um. A little bit different than what we've seen in the past.
Can I just try to clarify one thing real quick? Is that okay?
Sure.
Alright, so um, it is for the new building that we um, that we have, you know, constructed and um, but it's not funding for the new building. Um, what we had done when we did the building is um, we had. In the plans, we had to put put so much green space in, so many trees and so many grass and so this and that. And uh, so when it came time to do that, we went above and beyond and we had brick laid in. Um, around the front and around the sides and we added a complete new area um in the on the side. And I and I think I tried to email everybody with pictures of that and we we totally um tried to. Up our game and and really make it a statement of a. Really what we could do and how nice it can be and how we can improve it. And we still have a handrail yet to put around. We ran out of time this year in the back. We have signage yet to put up front. The building's done, but we still have some knickknack. Um, stuff details to do to it. So. What we're not asking for, we're not asking for funding for a new building. We're asking for funding for improvements that we have done to the facade. And while while building this building and uh and I and I wrote that in there, you know, for what the overrun cost that we did, the architectural. Fees and the work that we had done, you know, on my request and also did note kind of how expensive and how much money we put in the building. And the only reason I did that is I noticed that the Mitchell. Grant, you know, was that similar thing and I was trying to say this was similar to the Mitchell. Thing in that manner that we have a lot of overruns, a lot of things costed a lot more than we anticipated, similar to the Mitchell, so. I'm not trying to set new precedents here for you to give money for people building new buildings. That's not my request. My request was written for. The facade improvements that we have, we have made.
Oh, Bill, any questions or comments?
Uh, no questions.
Ryan?
Uh, in your grant request, it mentions that you're looking at making more uh improvements. And that's what you're using the funding for, or this is for funding for improvements you already made to the site?
Well, it's.
We can compensate.
We still have signage yet to complete and there's hand railing, you know, around the back because the the pond, I guess, is lower than. Anticipated and there's a, there's a a walkway there that has to have, we have to pay somebody to construct a. And there's a, there's a, a soft, uh, walkway there that has to have, we have to pay somebody to construct a, a railing and install it. And, um, so, and there, there's landscaping yet to be done. We just did per the plan around the side and the back, which is just grass. Um, so we wanted to improve that area to be more beautified for the neighbors. Um, you know, around the back and around the side. So there's still finishing work that we would like to complete. And, and we'd like to add some maybe exterior lighting to the brick that we put around the corner of the buildings.
And just curious, is that visible from the street?
Absolutely.
Teresa, any questions or comments?
Yes, I guess I, I do have a couple, not necessarily questions, but, um, you know, I still don't, I have to be honest, Rip, I still don't see it as, uh, looking at upgrading an existing in exterior facade. I just, I don't see it the same way that you are seeing it. I also have a concern about, um, when I look back at the outlines of the grant, uh, that this would be the third facade grant that you are requesting, uh, it for the same business, the same, uh, set of properties. And while I realize that they, that this is a separate building within that, uh, business, that that's a lot to request for one business. Uh, you had a, as you noted, you had a five thousand dollar grant, you had a twenty thousand dollar grant, and now this would be another ten thousand grant, all four facades. And, um, you know, in, in a community of this size, that's a lot of the facade grant, uh, part of what the community has to offer. And, um, you know, is that, uh, part of what this part of this grant cycle needs to do to share with the community? That's something we have to consider as well.
Um, may, may I just say, um, we had applied for two other grants, um, as, uh, TLC Restorations. This grant is four oh one K Properties, which is a new business and, and owns the buildings. So this is new. And I feel with what you've just said there, that we might be A, being greedy to ask, or B, uh, being penalized potentially for having more, restored more than one building?
I don't know that anybody's penalizing you.
These are three separate buildings, locations, all separate addresses, all separate buildings and separate businesses, names. I, I mean, so I, I don't quite, I guess I don't quite understand how that fits.
Okay. So you have three separate businesses that you're running now?
We do have three separate businesses. Yes, we do.
Are you, you're the owner or the CEO of all three, or I, 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 I think Teresa's maybe not understanding?
We are the owner and, and kind of like Mike McKenna would be the owner of Dairy Queen and Diamond Assets and, and other things.
Well, I understand that, but I thought the, uh, the doghouse in supplying the, the, uh, you know, the floor mats, the colors, the dyes and all that was to do that for your, um, cars and your different things that you're painting and providing those materials for.
So TLC Restorations is a business that restore cars. We also have, okay, we also have four oh one K Properties, which owns the buildings and the properties. And we have a TLC Transportation, which is a transportation business. So we have three separate businesses, all owned by myself and my wife.
But, okay, the idea, I'm not going to go into detail now.
Okay. Um, Larry?
Um, yeah, the, the only thing I'd like to do is try to keep the intent of the facade grant, uh, program intact as it is. I think our intention when we started it, and you can all refresh me if I'm, if I'm off base, but it was to encourage people with, uh, buildings that had, uh, had existed for a while, if you will, already existing buildings, uh, that we were trying to improve or give the opportunity to improve the facade of those buildings to make them more attractive to the downtown, to add to drawing people downtown, those sort of things. So in that sense, part of me is, yeah, I understand where you're coming from, Rip, and I, I appreciate that. On the other hand, I think it, it, it was intended to be applied for and awarded, well, before the building was, was built, uh, or, or, or redone. And I just worry that if we make, if we do it one time, then we're going to end up with a lot of applications. And I agree with Teresa, I think unfortunately we, we don't have a lot, an unending, uh, supply of funds to do those sort of things. If we were to expand that program to new buildings too, that could really be a big chunk of money as we look at the developing going on in our community. So that's just my comments.
And just for clarification, this is, uh, the application is for TLC Restorations, right?
Um, the application?
Yes, it is.
It's for TLC Restorations, okay. I wasn't sure, I don't have the application right in front of me right now.
Right, and, and that's my error. Um, TLC leases the building, it's owned by four oh one K Properties. But that, that's fine. I mean, it, it's okay.
Well, Linda, Linda, do you have something to, um, and, and we haven't voted. These, this is an opportunity for council members to have discussion.
Sure, sure, absolutely.
Linda?
Um, well, I, I guess, um, a couple of things come to mind here. First of all, um, I think, uh, I understand what you have been trying to accomplish and I totally understand how important it is for all of these things to come together. You had the opportunity to use this grant before you took the house down to rebuild it. And that was when you should, probably should have gone ahead and said-
Agreed. I, I totally see that now. I agree.
Wow, let's do, let's, um, I have to agree with, um, I have to agree with what Larry said. I mean, we really, that us having the ability to do these kinds of grants is really good. A lot of places and especially a lot of cities our size don't have this kind of an opportunity. Um, so I would like to, I, I would have to say, I don't think that you qualify for this grant this time around.
Agreed.
But I totally understand what you were trying to do.
Thank you.
Um, do you just, uh, want to make a motion then to, um, or not take any action at all, Mark? What are our options?
Well, yes, you, you have, I guess, three options, I guess, as you touched on already, Mayor. One would be the motion to approve the facade grant application as submitted. And I think Mr. Ripper clarified that it really would be for four oh one K Properties, uh, application. He just clarified that as a technical point. Well, so there'd be a motion to approve that, a motion to deny that. Or, uh, as you indicated, you could take no action, or you could have a motion to continue it to, or for further information to be submitted, whatever, those would be your options.
Okay. So given that, Bill, go ahead.
One additional comment. I, you know, I, I would agree with not going forward on, on this. Um, however, you know, I, I'd hate to see, uh, Rip going away thinking that, other requests, um, are, are not going to be met enthusiastically. He's got another property that's good, gonna need some money, um, that, um, does qualify uh, as an older depressed, um, facility. Uh, and I think there's going to be an opportunity in the not-too-distant future uh, to, um, seek facade improvement grants for, uh, that facility. And, um, I would urge him to do so, um, simply because, um, uh, you know, it's, it's not his fault that he's being aggressive and seeking every last penny he can get to do something that really is positive and good for our downtown area. So, um, I, I hope that the message, uh, if we do, in fact, um, uh, not approve this uh, or, uh, just, uh, uh, table it, um, that, um, the impression that he goes away with is not that, uh, the next application will be met with, uh, uh, rejection as well.
I'm, I'm good. Thank you. I, I understand.
So, um, council, Linda?
I'll make a motion to deny the request for the business application.
For the facade grant?
Yes.
And, uh, Teresa, you seconded it?
Yes, I did.
So all those in favor of denying the application for the facade grant?
Aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Okay. Rip, thank you for taking the time to be with us. And, um, we will look forward to your completion of your other application for funding from the W E D C. And, um, I think that's all we have on this issue going forward.
Alright, thank, thank you very much. I do appreciate it.
Yeah. Uh, review of December financial statements.
Alright, so what I have presented here is a summary of super preliminary of where, uh, twenty twenty is, um, kind of, uh, how do I say it? How it seems to be finishing up financially. And, uh, looks like we're, we're in solid shape. Um, we'll likely be able to fund some, uh, some of the capital requests that weren't funded as part of the original budget and potentially even, uh, the, uh, ambulance, uh, request if, uh, that's the desire of the council. There's still things that need, uh, be recorded in these financial statements, but, um, everything's looking pretty positive financially speaking anyway for twenty twenty. I've attached the November and December check registers because I realized I forgot to do the November check register last month. And yes, if people have questions.
Bill, any questions or comments?
Um, no, I'm assuming, well, one, one short one. Um, you know, we had some discussion in regard to the nonprofits as far as, uh, you know, revisiting that. Uh, and I'm assuming that that comes, what, maybe March or April, that, uh, we would be able to close out the books and consider that kind of request.
Yeah, I'm hoping to either the second meeting in February or the first meeting in March to be able to really hone in on what that, um, residual, uh, revenues, less expenses are. So obviously in twenty twenty, there were a lot of things that we couldn't do, things like open the splash parks, let's say, a ton of money. There was a lot of COVID grants for elections, the routes to recovery. Uh, I sent an email out kind of summarizing all those. And so that had a net positive effect on the overall financial statements. Then on the flip side, there were things that we obviously didn't anticipate, but I feel like we got reimbursed for most of that. So a lot of pluses, minuses and, and once again, we didn't really touch contingency, so that's a big chunk of this. Um, so I guess within the next four to six weeks, we can really hone in on that.
Uh, my, my desire is that, uh, you know, when we do have a final number, uh, that we treat it in a kind, kind of a holistic way. Um, you know, looking at both, uh, uh, the, uh, capital possibilities that, uh, we know are there uh, as well as that, uh, reconsideration on the amounts for, uh, for, uh, gathering place and Milton House.
I mean, is it a, a, a law that we spend this money? If we have money left over, does it have to be spent?
It doesn't have to be, but we, we have a very healthy, uh, fund balance. And, and as we go through that budget process every year, there's always a lot of needs that aren't necessarily funded. So we've, in the past, we've typically utilized these dollars to help fulfill those unfunded needs. Because what I, what I don't think we want to have happen is our fund balance grows so big that we're sitting on, uh, really, really big rainy day fund.
I understand that. I guess I was thinking about the comments that you had made about, uh, next year might be a, a really tight year. Um, so I, I want, I want everybody to be mindful that we don't have to spend every dollar, right?
Right.
And not that I'm opposed to, right, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, like, let's just be mindful, um, that's all.
And the issue with, uh, state funding is any reductions, we don't, if, if we knew for certain, like, hey, in three years, it's going to come back, um, then I'd feel more comfortable saying, yeah, we can plug, we can plug any kind of revenue shortfall with, with some one-time dollars. But with the unknown of when that, when the, when that permanent funding source would return, I have concerns about creating a, a long-term structural deficit.
Yeah, I have concerns for coming around next year and telling our employees they're not going to get raises and we're not going to have any capital budget too. So that's all I'm thinking about. Teresa, any questions or comments?
No, just when you talk about the, the debt though, just that we had talked about then perhaps adding to the, uh, Milton House and, uh, a gathering place for the additional ten thousand dollars each for their funding once we get to two thousand twenty-one.
Larry?
I concur with Alderman Wilson and also Alderman Rush, but I, I don't know if we specifically agreed to up, I think we said up to ten thousand dollars, Alderman, Rush, but I'm not sure of that. But I do like the idea of balancing the, looking at capital needs too and seeing, uh, if there's something we really could use or would need to fulfill this year. And then if there's extra dollars, consider that, uh, as, as funding for those two nonprofits. The other thing I want to point out though, I've been doing some reading and I've been in touch with several friends that are in government, uh, councils and, and whatnot across the state recently. And I, we're, we're really blessed as a community for, for Dan to be able to come to this group and Al and all of our sitting staff and the work that they put in, uh, that we can actually say, hey, we're doing fine. Uh, there's a lot of communities that are not doing so fine and in fact have very little, uh, reserves, if you will. And, 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 um, so we're, we are blessed as a community. And I, I hope the people out there in the community recognize the hard work that goes on to make that happen, so.
Thanks.
Me too. Um, I did, I was just gonna question, I think I've, I asked this before, but what about the assessments for Janesville Street? Is that part of what we're doing with some of this? I was looking at the sewer, sewer fund and the water fund. Was that for that expense? Were we actually, were we going to, weren't we going to use one of these funds? Isn't that what we talked about, or were we going to use what was left over?
The, the sewer, you know, you're talking about the water or the sewer main extension on North Angel Street, right?
Right.
Yep, so that came out of the sewer funds. You actually won't even see that in those, um, in the budget to actual because of the way the financial reporting is handled for the, um, the utility funds, because we capitalize it. Um, but, uh, the sewer fund paid for all that. And then we'll be setting up a receivable and it could take a very long time to collect on that. Other than the one parcel that will likely be connecting, I'm guessing in the spring. And that was all, and that was all accounted for in, in the sewer cash flow analysis back in the summer when we approved that. So there weren't, there wasn't any, uh- So there weren't, there wasn't any concern, some Mark Langer or myself on on short-term and near long-term cash needs for the sewer utility.
Okay. And so then with the lead pipe program that we're going to be doing, since this is something that we're actually going to be starting, is that something that we need to kind of put money aside for? And since we don't, since we know that this grant is only two years, because I kind of feel like once people wake up to, oh yeah, I might have these lead pipes, then, you know, if we have more people, we, are we going to have money?
So the, the grant, as we discussed earlier, only covers once, one, if we, if we even receive funding and Mark Langer helped me out if I'm speaking incorrectly. If we receive any funding, whenever that money runs out, it runs out because we're only covering laterals in which there's going to be minimal city cost at this moment in time. And as of right now, our rate structure with the P S C does not allow us to utilize public utility funds for the replacement of laterals on private property.
Thank you.
Anything else for anybody on the financials?
I will confer, concur with, with everyone else. I, I am looking forward to being able to assist the gathering place and the Milton House as we have previously discussed if possible. And we have not forget about, forgotten about the needs of our police department either, Scott. So got you in my mind too.
My, my point was that we treat all of these things as a whole, as opposed to, you know, dealing with fire department needs. Issue that was raised there in terms of capital and then say there's nothing left for anybody else. I think, you know, once we know what that dollar sign is, that we should have kind of a, a discussion of all of those options.
All right. Committee reports. I know that at least one committee met this week, right? No, next week?
Preservation met last week, but I missed it. So.
Um, we didn't end up having a quorum for Historic Preservation Commission. So the next meeting is going to be February 3rd for that. Last night, Story Gardens met and we went over kind of what our priorities are for 2021 moving forward and talking about trying to develop a list of regional artists that we can start to contact to see if they may be interested in the project at some point in the future when we have funding available and what types of pieces they can create, those kinds of things. Ashley, was there anything else that you can think of?
No, sounds all right. Inga and I are pursuing different grant opportunities at this time too.
Fire commission meeting on Thursday at 6:30.
6:30?
Yeah, it's an odd time. It's 6:30. Yep.
Yeah, that's, that's my fault because we have zoning board of appeals at 5:30. So I wanted to make sure that they had enough time and I didn't, you know, push them too quickly along in their meeting.
Good to know who to blame.
Tell them to talk fast.
Okay, staff reports. Ashley?
Um, I don't think I have anything really new. We're just doing curbside in our virtual programs. We're already starting to think about summer. That's exciting, but we're all doing well and staying busy.
Great. Thank you. Dan?
I don't have anything that we haven't already talked about.
Chief?
We're continuing on with our hiring process for our vacancy and I did a little research. The very first hiring process that I did for City of Milton, we had 25 people take the written test, which is the first step. Sometimes we have no shows for that. So we invited more than 27 people to take the test or more than 25 to take it and 25 showed up. We are conducting our written test for this process on Saturday and we have invited five to take the written test. This is a problem that we are going to continue to have that has no easy solutions. It's, we're not alone. It's endemic throughout the country, but recruiting for law enforcement positions is going to continue to be a challenge. Just wanted to update you on that.
Yep. Howie?
Um, ours is just, you know, pretty much the regular stuff. Did snow, doing the Christmas trees. They've been fixing park signs. We're doing some safety training. They did Digger's Hotline Training and some truck training as far as hauling loads and stuff from the mines. But the mine is Frank Brothers, but they have to take it for that class. So to go into the mine and get gravel. So they're doing their required trainings and like I said, just doing some park repair, doing some building maintenance floors and in between the snowstorms. So, and we'll probably start our, our public works replacement for some of the retired guys middle of March. So.
How long is it supposed to snow for tonight, Howie?
It should almost be done now. Yeah. It was only eight o'clock. It was about the latest it should snow.
Thank you, weatherman, Howie.
And, and just quick, I just want to give a quick shout out to the Public Works Department. They thought of the Story Gardens project when they replaced the score shed at South Goodrich Park. So the old one, we're going to make a couple of repairs on and then potentially find a place to use it at Story Gardens, either for storage or possibly a playhouse. So we're, the subcommittee talked about it and they had some good ideas. So thanks to Public Works for saving it and thinking of us.
Nice. Nice. Mark? Langer?
I don't have anything further.
My words are, it's just a long night, I guess. Long day. Okay, Inga?
Um, just quick, we are, we do have the city clerk recruitment posted and that's going to close on Thursday this week. So if you know anyone that wants to apply, encourage them to get their applications in as soon as possible.
And are we doing absentee ballots right now?
Um, not yet. Those will do in person starting February 2nd and then that will go through February 12th. And then I think that it's Tuesday next week that we need to have absentee ballots, the first batch sent out. So I'll be working on those over the weekend while we're monitoring the written test.
So you can request an absentee ballot?
Yes, you can request an absentee ballot now through my vote or if someone needs to, they can make an appointment with me and they can stop in and fill out the application too.
Okay. Gotcha. Al?
Yeah, kind of similar to Dan. Um, you know, pretty much what we've been up to is what, what we've talked about partially tonight. Obviously, again, there's a lot of development going on in the background and hopefully that can start to come, some of those projects can start to come to fruition. We're going to, we've got plan reviews back for the new Carl's Place Building. So that will be starting up soon and early 2021 is going to be the first quarter of 2021 is going to be the year of recruitment and the quarter of of pre-planning for things to come in 2021. So it's, it's busy.
Did I miss anybody? No? Ready for team building? No? This is going to be so easy. Tell me something positive that's happened since we last met.
I can go first. It's positive, but it's positive in a, in a bittersweet way. Today was the, was one of the milestone moments of my life. I watched my oldest son climb on the bus for the very first time in his entire life this morning. So that was bittersweet. We decided to send him in person because the school district has done such a wonderful job and he loves his teacher and so we didn't, Scott, there was no officer dispatched to our location as we sat in the street crying in our car. But, you know, we, we made it through and then I couldn't help myself. I drove over to the school and watched him get back on the bus when he came home. So, yeah, it was. It's positive, but positive in a very bittersweet way.
And did he like the bus ride?
He loved it. He loved it. He loved it. They have done, I mean, they've done such a good job with the virtual setting. He became so familiar and comfortable with his teacher that, you know, it was, it's like they already knew each other. And, you know, he knew that she was going to be waiting for him when he got off the bus. So that, you know, that's what made it work. So.
I'll go. The Packers made the NFC Championship game.
Darn you, Mark Langer.
You made it easy for me, Mark. The Buffalo Bills made it. And being a Buffalo boy who used to go to then Rich Stadium in Orchard Park and I'm really going to date myself and watch OJ Simpson carry the ball. It's, it's nice to have the possibility of the Packers playing the Bills. That would be just a dream for me.
Except for Mason Crosby got hurt.
Yeah.
He was trying to make a big play. It didn't work out.
It's positive. Only positive things.
They don't field goals this year, so that's positive.
Is that yours? Is that yours, Ashley?
No. I can say I had my birthday. That's pretty positive.
You did. You did. Oh, happy birthday.
Thanks.
Okay, I'll go. It is mandatory that all the secrets about UFOs be released by the government within six months. The truth is coming out. We are not alone and, and Aaron Rodgers agrees with me.
I was gonna say, what you're gonna see is one paper with almost three quarters in black ink.
Well, I'll go next. I guess the most positive for, for me was I, I think most of you know, probably know, my birthday was last Friday.
A big one.
Yeah. I turned 65 and I was looking back at my medical records and how I, my parents had gotten a letter when I was 15 saying, Mr. and Mrs. Lane, we're very sorry to inform you, but your son probably won't make it past the age of 25. And I guess I'm really grateful that I've had those extra 40 years. So.
Wow. And you are certainly a gift to all of us in the City of Milton.
Yes, we are very grateful too. Wow.
Great people.
Yes.
Since we're mentioning birthdays, I had my birthday when I was in Dubai. So I can't really call that a positive necessarily. But when I came back, I got a negative test on the COVID test. So that's probably a positive. I'll just use my son is now starting to learn to feed himself to some extent with solids. He's taking little puffs and shoving them in his mouth.
Are you kidding me? I feel like that kid is just a little baby.
He's advanced a couple areas and one of them is definitely food. He's been eating solids for probably close to a month and a half now.
Wow.
And just he, he loves his solids. So as that puffs in his mouth, now we're already progressing to somewhat bread. Just a level. So some other things too.
Thanks.
I'll mention that I have my first dose of the vaccine. So got one in and one coming in about 10 days. So.
Nice. You know, I just asked Al about that today. I'm like, when is our police department getting backstabbed? None of us know.
Yeah, we, we were Mercy Hospital contacted us and asked us if we had people available to be vaccinated. And so there was, it's not a hundred percent, but those who are interested, myself included, took advantage of that opportunity.
I would have been there.
Well, there's some, there's some, there's some opinions out there on whether or not we should have been given that opportunity.
Oh, yes. My daughter's a teacher. So she got it too.
Yeah. So now, now that officially we've been placed in section 1B for rollout, they have now started the 1B vaccination. So we're no longer jumping ahead. Yeah. And now SSM has also offered to our staff as well and had two that didn't decide not to do it the first time, who have now reconsidered and they're going to do the SSM. So they're getting there.
They keep changing 1B. I've heard three different reports as to what that entails. Now this evening I got another report as to who's included in 1B. So I'll be interested.
I'm in, I'm out, I'm in, I'm out.
Right. It was age 75 and then middle of today it was 70 and then this evening the notice said 65.
Well, you're still too young, Teresa.
Yeah. No, when they get down to 35, I'll be fine. So.
Me too.
So.
And stay tuned because we have a change in a presidential
Well, right.
administration coming up that might also alter the trajectory.
Right. We've got 24 hours here. So. Uh, you know, mine's along the same lines as Al. My, a little bit the other way though. My husband and I have been teachers for the last two months. And so when we got done last week, you know, we had rah rah, we were retiring again. Been teaching a kindergartner for the last two months and we were done. And then we got a picture today from her school. Her principal sent her a picture of going back to school for the first day. So that was nice to see them back in school. I agree with Al. Just to see them back in school is cool.
Fun. Very fun.
Yeah.
So my kids got bunk beds, which means that I have a more productive office environment in one of the rooms. So that's good for me. And I think I can officially say now that my almost three-year-old is potty trained.
Woo-hoo.
Yay.
Bunk beds are the best. My kids had bunk beds too.
Well, I have been working on some home projects and I am very happy to say that I got through the back entrance of my house, the cabinet and the pantry and painted and lined the shelves and all that stuff. And it just feels so good to have it done.
That's a lot of work.
It was a lot more work than I expected.
Howie's just always so smug.
I It snows every day. Trying to be positive. I ran three miles last week. So I'm on the half marathon comeback trail. So then it's cold every day since. So.
Nice.
What we got left? Mark S. He's ready to go.
Sure. Uh, since the last meeting was positive, I was able to celebrate, of course, Christmas with family and my, and, and celebrate birthdays of my grandson and my daughter. So that was, that's a lot of fun.
Just makes me want to have cake right now, right this minute. Do we have everybody? Dan, did you go?
No, I haven't yet.
Oh.
Um, cause Langer stole my thunder. Um, Dan was at the game.
Dan was at the game.
I was, I was part of the 8500. So I would say that was positive, a very, very unique experience. Hopefully there's only one more experience like that left. And we can go back to 80,000 people at 1265. But very, very cool experience having the entire row to yourself and the row in front of you and the row in back of you. And no lines for bathrooms and concessions and drinks.
That is like a dream. There's so little space in the, on, on those seats at Lambo. I mean, oh my God, that's a dream.
But I had to make enough noise for the equivalency of 15 people. Took me till about Monday to get my voice back.
Well, thanks for showing up for us.
Did you feel lonely at times, Dan?
It, it was weird. It was definitely weird. Um, but it was very cool. It was, it was, yeah, it was just very unique and eerie in some ways.
I was amazed on the broadcast how loud it sounded though.
For how few fans.
Because we all had to scream to make it sound like 80,000 people.
It sounded good.
It did. You guys did fabulous. I thought it sounded really loud too. I was like, wow.
Well, they did give us big plastic things that in addition to screaming, people were pounding them against metal benches. So that helped amplify sound.
Way to go.
And Little Wayne was there, so.
Yes, he was. Him and his new tune.
Yeah, I don't know what to think of it, but he was there.
Ashley's like, yeah. I, I still like the Weisenheimer song. So that's what we should have played at the beginning of the council meeting today. Go you Packers, go, go. You guys, are you proud? Al, do you remember that song? Do you guys remember that? The Weisenheimers?
I have the album.
Yeah.
I have the whole album.
Uh, Jeff Brakowski was one of, was, I've had many supervisors over my history at the county, but he was, um, one of my supervisors and he was in that band. So that's kind of cute to remember that. All right. Is that everybody? We're all happy and positive now. You're welcome. Howie's awake. He's doing good.
I did not know Mason Crosby got hurt though. So that was.
Yeah, he injured his, injured his shoulder on that funky snap.
I saw he injured it, but I never heard an injury report. So.
So does he need his shoulder? Is that really necessary?
Well, he continued to play the rest of the night with a busted up shoulder. So.
Cause that's what I was thinking. I'm like, well, I thought he continued to, to kick, but you know, I could be wrong based on my memory, my loss of words.
He's kind of like a, he's kind of like a robot anyways. So.
Yeah, like a shoulder is just, you know, a plus when you're kicking. So February 2nd, 2021 for this meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone to post? All right. It was nice to see all of you. Stay healthy. Congratulations on getting a vaccine.
Yes.
See you soon. Yep.
Good night, everybody.
Bye.
Bye.